We can AI it tomorrow.
Okay, I'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call. Barazza?
Here.
Lancy? Beck? Peeper?
Here.
Salsa? Wolf, here. Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Yazi? Malay?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger. Okay, I think we have eight out of 13. You have a couple that will probably be arriving late, we hope. All right, reminder tonight, anybody that comes up to speak at the podium, just make sure you get the microphone adjusted and you can see that the little green light's on when you're talking, so you can hear yourself in the background. And then items to be removed, added, or changed for tonight?
Nope.
None?
Okay. And then item four is matters from the public for items not on the agenda this evening. Anybody have anything for not on the agenda tonight? Yep. All right, nothing? I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. I'll go ahead and read that. We have one item, item A, ordinance 2024-52, an extension of a moratorium on acceptance and processing of certain building and zoning applications in the South River Street Gateway District. Anybody have any comments on the consent agenda? If not, I'd recommend that we move that to city council.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by, that went to Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Move on to item six, which is ordinance 2024-51, variance for principal structure setbacks for 436 Wobonzi Trail, James Farrenbach applicant.
Appears the applicant was unfortunately unable to make it here tonight, but we're still gonna continue with this item. Apologize, I'm trying to pull up. Mr. Farrenbach is looking at 436 Wobonzi Trail, and he applied for a deck permit this spring, and during that review, we found, discovered that the principal structure setbacks for the deck were not complying with the zoning code. His house was originally constructed and intended to be an interior lot within his subdivision. Sometime prior to 1971, the development to the south for Windsor Lane purchased a lot adjacent to him and dedicated that lot as right-of-way. So his lot went from a conforming interior lot in his subdivision under the county jurisdiction to a non-conforming lot with, for the setbacks for the 1971 code and our code today. With that right-of-way being dedicated, it then created essentially three, three street frontages, I'll have a map for your reference, on his property. What he's asking for today is to be considered for several variances. The main variance that's being requested is that the western property line, which is here, that abuts Windsor Lane, be treated as an interior side setback rather than the corner side setback. The reason being is that the lot was originally platted and the house was constructed as an interior lot, so he's asking for the lot, that western lot line to be treated as was originally intended. Two subsequent variances are being asked in terms of if the city council will grant the interior side setback to be considered on that western property line. He's requesting the replacement, to allow for the replacement of the existing deck, the interior side setback of approximately six feet from that proposed setback line. And then for the existing house, he's requesting a variance of approximately 2.2 feet. Staff's suggestion was, when pursuing the variance, to formalize the existing footprint of the house, so if for some reason it was destroyed, damaged beyond 50%, he could rebuild it in the existing configuration. Staff has also suggested that he pursue a variance from Chapter 6 glossary, to consider the south property line abutting Windsor Lane as a standard rear property line instead of a double frontage that's this property line. It would solve a lot of issues regarding fences and other accessory structures in the code. Again, when he, when this lot was platted, it was supposed to be an interior lot with a standard rear. The subdivision here for Windsor Lane was nonexistent, and it was only able to develop with the purchase of this land to establish right-of-way. The applicant did not create this situation, nor did his predecessors, considering his home was built in the early 1960s, and this development here was built in the 70s. Staff has also been considering and discussing the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way along this segment of Windsor Lane. This would allow for the applicant to have additional property on his western property line, as well as this property owner here at 500 Wobonzi Trail. The logic to this is that if the first variance is granted to treat this as an interior side setback on the western property line, the second and third variances for the deck setback in the existing home would likely no longer be needed. However, you know, and for the sake of time for the applicant, we recommended pursuing the variance as we worked out the vacation of right-of-way. In discussing with Public Works, it sounds like we do have the ability to vacate a portion of that property, and we will likely have to bring that back to city council in the next several months once surveys and everything is agreed upon with Mr. Farrenbach and the neighbor across the street. He's had no objection to taking additional right-of-way. Again, the right-of-way there is larger than the city needs. We would be maintaining our standard 66-foot right-of-way, and then anything additional would go to the residents. Since it was originally a development lot, it is oversized for what we need, and it does create additional maintenance for the city staff. If anybody has questions about this variance, I might be happy to answer them, you know, based on the historical context and the true hardship created by the Jason lot becoming right-of-way. Staff felt that this, this does meet the requirements of a variance, and it is why we have a variance process established.
You have any questions? Oh, yeah?
Thanks, Zach. If I'm recalling this correctly, Windsor Lane is basically a dead end on both sides, right?
Correct. So there's a, yeah, it's a dead-end cul-de-sac on both sides. So essentially, this is the only point of access to that, that street, and when that subdivision developed, they needed to obtain access to the land. The history is a little spotty, but my assumption is that either this lot was one of the only lots remaining, or it was the cheapest one, you know, for the developer to purchase to make right-of-way.
But basically, the traffic on that road is very limited.
Correct. It's very, very limited. You know, when Mr. Farrenbach spoke at the Plan Commission and Zoning Board Appeals meeting, you would be surprised, you know, to know that most of that is right-of-way. Most people going by would assume that it is his property. The deck is existing, his home's existing. What he is looking to do is just simply replace the deck in its current, you know, current location. You know, for your reference, the deck is, it's leaning in several spots, it's unsafe, it's separating actually physically. So he's unable to use it. This is his primary means of egress and ingress, similar to another deck variance that I brought before you earlier this year. He can't also move his, the deck further over here because there's an exit from a sunroom addition. So it kind of, the deck and where it's configured kind of limits to where it is. So he's just seeking to replace the deck in its location. Again, this is a little complex where it became a corner lot later in time, whereas, you know, if it was an interior lot, you know, it would be close to, you know, complying with the code as noted, but we are looking to remedy that with the vacation of right-of-way. So the requests today are for, for variance requests, but in reality, if the city council does choose to vacate portions of the right-of-way, it would truly be just two requests in the end.
It appears to be same-sized deck in my second.
Correct. It's identical footprint, and it's, to our records, it is likely from the 90s, and we did not require permits for decks until the late 90s, essentially, and when we really started formalizing our zoning process here in the city.
By no fault of his own, he's basically, you know, he's been out of compliance for some time, but, but, you know, it wasn't his doing.
Yes, correct. It was not his doing, and it was unknown to him and likely every other previous homeowner before him.
Little subdivision that got stuck back in the corner there has created a lot of problems over the years. And I think we remedy one by approving this and moving on. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council 2024-51, variance for principal structure setbacks for 436 Wobonzi Trail, James Farrenbach applicant. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Uwer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and let the record reflect that we now have 10 aldermen.
Should this go on the consent agenda for city council?
I think so.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Pretty simple.
Thank you.
Move on to item seven, which is Resolution 2024-103R, awarding Gateway Improvement Grant Funds to Mill Creek Early Childhood Program Tenant at 510 South Batavia Avenue.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for having me today. So before you, we have Resolution 24-103-R, awarding a Gateway Improvement Program Grant to Mill Creek Early Childhood Program. They're located at 510 South Batavia Avenue. This Gateway Improvement Grant should be used to help the tenant, Mill Creek, remove the existing front porch and replace it with a new enclosed front porch. Again, the address is 510 South Batavia Avenue. Project total estimated cost is a little over $131,000. And again, that is to replace the existing front porch with a new enclosed front porch. Staff is recommending that city council committee at a whole approve the attached Resolution 24-103R, award a matching grant to Mill Creek Early Childhood Program in an amount of $20,000. Tonight, we do have Dan representing Mill Creek Early Childhood, and we also have his contractor Sean here in the room, and I want to give them an opportunity to come up and speak to you all about their project and what they plan to do, and also give council an opportunity to ask questions or provide any comments to our applicants. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My wife Alana is here with me as well. My name is Dan. This is Alana Marzak. We're the owners of Mill Creek Early Childhood Program. We have two locations on Route 31. This one question is 510 South Batavia Avenue. The front porch, which faces Route 31, is in disrepair. It is an old wood deck that needs replacing, and what we are intending to do is to remove that front deck, replace it with a fully enclosed, usable space for all of the kids where they can use it year-round. So it would have windows that can open, it would have a nice fan, nice lighting, a place the kids can safely go out to and actually watch what's going on on Route 31, and then use it as sort of a multipurpose room where they can do different activities and things like that. I'll let my wife chime in if she has anything to add.
So I guess the why, we're an outdoor program, so we like to be outside as much, as frequent as we can. So we use that porch a lot right now, but number one, it's smaller. Two, if it's raining, it's okay, but when we are doing a lot of our, I don't want to say work, they're not working, but there are drawings, or we're doing projects, it'd be nice to be able to be out there and get the same outdoor feel, but be protected from elements if we wanted to do something where it might blow or all that, wind blowing or rain ruining some of the stuff. So using that, I think it'll be a big enough space where we might be able to get all the children together to do activities. That building is an old house, we renovated it, but it's really hard to have all 57 children together in a space if we want to do something as a large group in the middle of the winter. In the summer, in nice weather, we're outside. So being able to have a space that allows us to do that would be fantastic. And then also will give us another egress or access to, directly from our playground to inside, because right now we have to walk outside of our playground to go inside to use the bathroom. I wish we could build an outdoor bathroom, but you know, that'd be a different story. But we'd be able to get directly from the playground to the bathroom, which would also just be safer for the children as well. So a lot of different reasons, but mainly just have another use and be able to be, have opportunities to do things in larger groups, have our families together too. So, yeah.
And just to add one other point, right now it's an old wooden deck structure. Everything would be composite and stuff that would last a whole lot longer and look a whole lot nicer. Kind of what we did to the back of the building, we replaced our ADA ramp with a composite material as opposed to the wood material, and we did the deck and the stairs in the back. So we're slowly renovating exterior things to more composite material. Open for any questions?
I have a quick question. You mentioned that you have 57 students at that location right now. Do you anticipate growth, or is that where you're happy?
Nope, we cannot use that space for any more children because it is not air-conditioned or heated, and therefore we cannot use it as a permanent classroom. So nope, our, what is it? What's our enrollment? I can't even think of it. Our capacity, there you go. Our capacity cannot get any larger than that.
And also, all 57 kids would not be on the deck at the same time.
So for that enclosed deck, would that have heating and air conditioning? You're saying no. So it would be kind of more of a three-season-ish?
Correct. So more like a three-season. We originally had looked at adding heating out there, and it just, the cost, it was just way in between, yeah, between the requirements and the cost, it was just cost prohibitive. So it's a three-season room. All the windows will open and have screens, so there'll be a cross breeze, fans, things like that.
This may sound, I don't know, to some people, but we will probably use it all four seasons, because if you put a coat and snowspans on, we would be outside. So it is something that we will be using for, but what would be nicest is they can maybe sit down and do something like with something frozen and observe it, and then take off their gloves for a minute or two and do that drawing, whereas when you're outside in the snow, it is nearly impossible. So it's allowing us a lot more opportunities to do things with the children.
Questions, comments?
So a comment, you know, the Gateway Grant that we have, this is a perfect example, you know, looking at these drawings and what it is and what it's gonna be, I think is significant, and that kind of investment there, I'm fully supportive of chipping in 20,000 for it.
Exactly what it's for, and it's in a very, you know, highly trafficked area right in the gateway. So I think it's a great use of it, and I'm really happy that you guys are gonna invest in further into that, you know, to support your, what you're doing there.
And I was just gonna say, you already have done so much with that property, and you've made it look so attractive coming into town, so this will just add to that. And it's always so great seeing your kids all over town.
Yeah.
We do hear that a lot.
You come all over the place, yeah.
They were sitting in here when we graduated, you know, late, earlier this year. We'd taken pictures in here at one point, it was very cute.
I saw some of those pictures. Yeah, they were super cute, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2024-103R, awarding a Gateway Improvement Program Fund, Grant Funds to Mill Creek Early Childhood Program Tenant on 510 South Batavia Avenue. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that'll be on the consent agenda for a week from, a week from next Monday, the first council meeting in August.
August 5th.
Yep.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to item eight, which is a discussion on the University of Illinois Capstone Study Summary and Next Steps. Gary?
Thank you, alderman. We're happy tonight to present the results of the Capstone Study. Earlier this year, the University of Illinois at Chicago selected our utility to serve as the subject of a study by graduate students. Students are required to perform such a study as part of their master's in public administration degree program. So we work with three gentlemen that were all graduate students, and those gentlemen put together then the presentation you see, as well as the actual detailed study that was posted up on the website. So this study is meant, from the city's perspective, this study is meant to serve as a starting point. That'll basically serve as a launching point for a more detailed engineering and resiliency study that will be recommended as part of the 2025 budget process. There are several key takeaways from this Capstone project, including really a fact that we all know, and that was as the city was developed in the late 90s or early 2000s, a lot of infrastructure went in during a very short period of time. As that infrastructure begins to age out, it will need to be replaced in a very short period of time. But that's gonna present a challenge to the city to balance the, the need for capital improvements and capital replacements, and the associated cost of that versus the city's desire to maintain balanced rates, and maintain stable rates, I should say. So that'll be a challenge that the city faces. That was one of the key takeaways. And the other key takeaway, again, is the utility's resiliency against both natural hazards and the utility's ability to ultimately conform or modify, transform itself would be a better word, for distributed generation as more and more customers begin generating their own electricity on their homes. I did say in here that the city's current budget, we have a project ongoing right now for Norcos Drive, and the Norcos Project of undergrounding overhead wires, that's an example of one of the many future projects that will, will be required to improve resiliency and reliability of our system. So we do plan to develop a scoping document and issue requests for qualifications for study consultants prior to the end of 2024. The RFP process will enable us to get cost estimates that we can then insert into the recommended 2025 budget for a resiliency study. And we're also planning resiliency, resource planning, cost of service, and electric rate studies, kind of all fit together. They all, they all contain components that are reliant upon each other. In parallel with the infrastructure study, we're also gonna be taking steps to initiate a resource planning, cost of service, rate studies, and then insert dollar values for those studies into the 2025 recommended budget. Hopefully, that will get approved, and then it's anticipated that really the studies as a group will go forward throughout the year 2025, and then can be completed prior to the discussion of the 2026 budget. So those are really the next steps following the UIC Capstone Project, and the Capstone Project, again, was kind of the first kickoff of the entire process.
Questions? Did anybody actually read all of it?
96 pages. Thirty-six.
A few. I have not finished it.
I didn't read the second half, which was the, like, long form, but I skimmed through the presentation portion. I guess I should clarify that. Excellent stuff. I really liked a lot of the, a lot of the graphs they had of how old our power utilities, how power poles are. It's like, that's, those are great images to have that really kind of give us a heads-up of what's coming up and help us to be prepared for that.
Again, especially impressive in the context of graduate students, students who really have never done this before and who are putting this together for the very first time. They did an excellent job.
I was impressed by the amount of, the, you know, the width of what was looked at, because I didn't expect it to be that in-depth or that much there. So I'm impressed by it, and eventually I'll get through all of it. Tara?
Yeah, I scanned mainly the slides too, and was super impressed with the work that they did, the projections that they made, and the things that they really focused on, that I think we can kind of use a lot of this information as we go forward and, you know, continue with our strategic plan and continue to make future strategic plans. So.
Yeah, a professional consultant can certainly use this report as the, as a launching or the kickoff point for their more detailed analysis. Obviously, a really detailed analysis is needed. You're gonna need to look at the engineering of our system, you're gonna need to look at lifecycle costing of the various components, you're gonna need to look at how solar's being deployed and battery storage is being deployed. All of those are more, more complex and detailed topics, but they can all stem from this report here, and that was the purpose.
Is everybody a really wide view of what we have to try to figure out how to handle over the next 20, 30 years? Because it's gonna be a lot to do, and any upgrades where they make sense, everything has to be put together.
I'm sorry, alderman.
Go ahead.
Hand-in-hand goes with that goes cost of service, how much it's going to cost us to do those things, how that fits into maybe a rate design, maybe we need to change our rate design a little bit, and then also resource planning, what you just mentioned, the next 30 years, what are we gonna be doing for resources over the next 30 years? So all of those go hand-in-hand, which is why we'll come back to you with a budget recommendation for 2025 to kick off really all those studies.
I mentioned, wanted to thank Max Weiss. He's a recent graduate from UIC who was very instrumental in helping us to put together our proposal for this Capstone project in a way that, because the students themselves get to choose the projects that they work on, and I think that working together collaborately, collaborating with Gary and the electric department put together a very nice proposal, and the three individuals who are working on the project were really excited about the opportunity. Yeah.
I think it's something that just about every city that has their own electric utility has to think about, and every other utility out there has to think about, you know, because this is not gonna go away.
You should mention that, because we'll probably be doing similar studies for water and sewer.
Yeah, there'll be a lot going on.
It's been a long time. It's been more than a decade since we've done real detailed studies like that. So it's time for us to do that again.
Other questions? Anything for Gary?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, now we'll move on to item nine, which is discussion on West Wilson Street Funding and Land Uses.
Yes, this is something that was brought up as part of the Ashton Ridge development, and the discussion at that time was regarding trying to use some funding from the Ashton Ridge development to try and do some enhancements to the industrial area, the commercial quarter that's along Wilson Street, south of there. And so we looked at it internally as to, you know, what we think we could do and what we can't do, and one of the issues is that Ashton Ridge is gonna be generating certain amounts of revenue, you know, as part of the development with property taxes and head taxes and things like that. However, those taxes really need to go back into that development itself to pay for maintenance of roads, the streets, the sidewalks, the utilities and all that. So it's really not something that we would have excess funds for to pay for, for that. So we started looking at the area a little bit more in detail and tried to come up with some thoughts on, on what to do, but we wanted to certainly open it up for council discussion. I've outlined here three different areas, or I should say two, two really different areas that are, that are in play here. So the area in red in general is kind of the study area that we looked at, because it consists of uses that are not, you know, totally compatible with the Ashton Ridge development. It's kind of a transitional area with different types of land uses, primarily residential, primarily industrial, you know, some mixed-use developments and things like that. And then the add-on area that I have there is the area that's outlined in green. That's areas along Main Street that are larger lot, single-family developments. They're all ones that were originally in the county, were annexed to the city in the last few years. They have some redevelopment potential. We know that the area is west of the townhomes right at Van Norck and Main. That area was proposed for townhomes at one point, it's been sold, there's plans to just renovate the homes and rent them out, but it does have the capability, as well as properties along there also, for additional development. However, you know, our main focus is kind of on the red dashed area, because that area is primarily non-residential in nature, that has the most benefit for bringing in taxes without having a lot of impacts or resource drain on the city, you know, we'll call it. So, you know, they generate more revenue than they, they, they use for, you know, resources that the city would have to provide for services. So we kind of just threw out this as an area, and I think the issue is that, you know, we can look at, you know, what kind of funding sources are available for this area, we can talk about special service areas, TIF, business development districts, but I think before we get into that, we feel that the best thing to do is talk about whether we should look at the land. we should look at the land uses and what is going on there, because we can certainly, you know, put money towards some of these buildings, but long-term, are these the uses that you would want to see in this area? You know, some of these uses are going to become incompatible with the residential development that's now going to be going north of there. So it may not make sense for those to be there long-term and maybe to have those, you know, amortized or phased out over a period of time. So we think that before we start talking about really funding improvements in there, we really should have some discussion about, you know, land uses and what we want to see there. This would kind of like what we're doing on South River Street to an extent, except on a smaller scale. So we could probably do this internally as city staff. However, with the various studies that we're doing and our plan to do this year, we don't really have the capacity to do that this year. So we would really be looking at if that's if that's the direction that we're taking to do that in 2025, you know, and plan for budgeting some money to, you know, do that. But I think we could probably do this in-house because it is a relatively small area and, you know, provide some, you know, planning alternatives for you and then also, you know, potential funding sources for things that, you know, could be done out there. So wanted to open it up for you, but I just wanted to kind of put this in context, you know, as to the land uses and the layout and the geographic area that we're talking about here and just open it up for, you know, further discussion and consideration.
Comments?
We kind of didn't have much luck with mixed use north of there. Looking at the mixed-use zone as it's as it's written now, was I reading it right that it's a minimum lot size of one acre? So is that kind of targeted more towards your sort of five-over-one developments?
It can be, but it doesn't have to be. I mean, it's, it can be, you know, larger mixed-use developments. I mean, I think this, you know, the Ashton Ridge area, for example, I think that was looked at for apartments at one point. You know, so, I mean, there's, there's a variety of things that can fall under that.
Do we have a smaller-scale version of that, which would be appropriate for lots of these sizes?
Not directly. You know, certainly we could look at the lot size in the mixed-use district to see if it makes sense to go smaller. There are some other things that may, you know, need adjusting in the mixed-use district depending on how we're applying it. Downtown mixed-use district obviously has different standards just because of the way it's configured, but this is not the downtown area, so. So it would be a little bit different. But yeah, certainly we can, you know, look at, can we make the existing mixed-use district more widely applicable to smaller parcels?
Okay, that that might kind of help that area of that or a neighborhood commercial designation. I know when we were looking, when the Ashton Ridge proposal was up for a proposal, a lot of, there was a number of folks who wanted to see maybe some small-scale business still in that area, and this, I think, gives us the ability to still provide that as a potential option. So could be just a nice adjacency bonus, as it were, for that area.
Yeah, we did do some downzoning in the TIF four areas around, you know, Main Street and Mallory. We did some downzoning of some of those properties because we, those were, a lot of those were industrial, and we just didn't feel that it was appropriate to have those be industrial any longer with, you know, the change in land uses and things that were going on in that area. So that, so we did do some downzoning in that that area as part of that that TIF district that we created.
Yeah, I was probably thinking along the same lines as Dustin in some sort of mixed use or something in there. I think several of the folks in the light industrial have been good neighbors. Obviously, the windmill countertops has been something that, you know, they put on a nice storefront there at the corner, so everybody enjoys that. I don't know, you know, if they'll want to be there forever or, you know, what forever is because forever is a long time. So it looked to eventually kind of like on South, like you said, just like South River Street, it's like, okay, let's look to stop treating it as light industrial, you know, grandfather and anybody that's there, and then start to look towards something that, being close to the high school and close to now, you know, even more residents, you know, you, there's the possibility. I know, you know, Pulte said, you know, the traffic is just not enough for something like we were talking about with their development, but I think as long as we market it in a way and there's less work to be done in theory with some of those buildings potentially that they could, they could turn into something else. Because obviously now with the orthodontist there and the chiropractor is another good good use there, that there's more that can be done. There's a couple vacant lots in there that would be nice to see something not light industrial, not service necessarily, something that provides more immediate tax revenue and stuff like that.
Yeah, and the issue with the light industrial district is that it does allow for a much broader level of uses that are not necessarily going to be compatible with residential. And so as, you know, like, you know, the distance that separates those industrial from the homes, there's a detention pond, you know, basin that's going to be between that and the nearest homes. And, you know, we'll assume for the moment that all those, you know, industrial users are great and fantastic, but that doesn't mean that they can't sell. One is actually on the market. You could have anything that's allowed in the LI district, and so it might not be as a desirable use or user adjacent to those people. So when that happens, the residents are going to be calling Ward Three people, I think, or whatever ward it is, and they're going to be, you know, complaining about the noise or the, you know, whatever the issue might be, so.
Yeah.
I realize this isn't necessarily a suburban way of thinking, but, you know, I think it would be really lovely for Batavia if we had accessible convenience stores that are walkable for all of our residents, especially because we are a city that promotes, you know, pedestrian use, cycling and stuff like that. So just the more and more we can think along those lines, like how to make convenience stores accessible. And so I I picture this as being a fantastic location. It's in between, right in between Randall and downtown Batavia and, you know, kind of just central on the west side of town. So I think having, just bringing that into the conversation would be nice.
And always the challenge is, is, you know, what is the market going to support in one of these, when you think, when we talk about these things? I mean, I think everybody would look at this and say, I would love to have a corner coffee shop with a little dry cleaners, a little maybe pizza place right there. And if if it can work, that's great. It's just that, you know, there has to be enough traffic and support for it to, you know, to survive. So but that is one of the things we had thought about because when you look at the mixed-use district, when we talked about the Ashton Ridge development originally, we couldn't get it before they they proposed their development, we looked at saying, okay, this is a mixed-use development, so we're going to have residential, but can we also have some type of a small neighborhood commercial component to it? Pulte said, no, they can't do that. They don't think it supports it. But perhaps this corner being a, you know, relatively major intersection would be able to support it. So that's something to consider.
Well, looking at the residents who are living within three-quarters of a mile of this, you know, young, single families, you know, lots of kids, lots of teens, you know, when you go by the Dairy Queen, it's busy all the time, especially in three seasons. And so I think there is, there's a lot of people who would take advantage of things that are geared towards that, those specific age groups.
Right, right, sure.
Yeah, I do. So, I mean, my, my question would be, how do we determine about viability? Because I live over here on the east side of town. We have that real nice little strip mall that Louis Angelo's is in, where we don't have anything like, like Alderman Lehman said, like a nice little convenience store or something or dry cleaners, which keep on going out of business. You know, it's never been filled. I mean, we have Louis Angelo's and you have the, you have the nice childcare center, but then it's a brand-new place that seems to be empty all the time, and that's what I would be worried about. I mean, like you were just saying, is, you know, what, what is, everybody's very mobile now. And I mean, so you do have Randall and you have Kirk right here, and so it's just one of those things I would be concerned about, about a viability of, you know, a business such as that. It would seem, you know, sometimes like the business like Prairie State Packaging, they're not really supplying anything that somebody would walk into and buy, but they've been in business there forever, you know? I mean, so.
Let me just clarify. I'm thinking like something that any age would go use. So you're not going to have a 12-year-old going to Louis Angelo's, is that the name of it, to get pizza for lunch, you know? So that's not as accessible for an entire.
Right, but my point is, is why would there not be a, I mean, it just seems like we have a couple of places like that along the main strip where there's not, where there's opportunities to go in, there's already not anybody in there.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's just my concern about those things, so.
You have to remember there was a convenience store that was in that strip mall.
For a hot minute, yeah.
Yeah, and they they just didn't have the traffic to stay there.
Which I thought was weird because you have the the big apartment complex right there, you have that whole subdivision right off Red Ant that there's, I mean, really, if you want to walk to something, you're not walking anywhere close unless you're heading down towards the city, you go to Speedway. So it's just, it's just a concern of mine in terms of those types of concepts along here. I don't want to have any more empty-looking things. So sometimes maybe it is just businesses, even though people might complain about, you know, it's not, it's not helping us out at all, but they fill the place and they generate taxes.
And also at the corner of Wilson and Prairie, where we have that strip mall, the 7-Eleven, now we only have the 7-Eleven and Rosati's. Everything in between is gone. We had a laundromat, we had donuts.
Subway, donuts, and there was massage parlors.
Management and marketing, you know?
No, I, I get, yeah, I get that. But I mean, like, the place, the place right up the street's much nicer condition, so to speak, you know, brand new, and it just seems like it never gets anybody in there.
Right. And that's, and that's one of the things that we would have to look at, I think, if we're going to say we're going to, you know, wholesaling, market this and push, push for commercial zoning is perhaps do a market study on that. And maybe that's what we do in 25 is say, okay, if if we wanted to change this to, say, neighborhood commercial, would it support a strip center or small little retail stores or what have you? You know, it's that kind of thing. And obviously, if strip center, I'd be looking at something more mixed use as best as you can with, you know, maybe some apartments above, ideally, and then the parking in the back type of thing, so it doesn't look like a typical strip center, so.
Right.
And we open up a whole another can of worms with drive-throughs, because to be able to support a business, anything like that, and that somebody's going to ask for a drive-through, guarantee it. And, you know, how how do you get a two- or three-story building to make it mixed use, to have, you know, an apartment or two or five in it? It's, it's a very difficult thing to do on a small scale there, even with the traffic, even with the new residential right next to it. If it was something that people wanted and people would support all the time, we'd already have them. You know, and Chris brought up a great point, that's been over there, that's probably close to 10 years, and it, I don't think it's ever been full.
I've, I've lived over there the whole time, it's never been full.
And, you know, that's something that we struggle to fill the spots that we have. And not that I'm saying it's not something to try to do, but it's going to be tough to do that.
And retail generally is suffering everywhere, as we know. I mean, it's, well, us less than maybe some other communities, but, you know, it, you know, it has been generally hard to fill, you know, certain spaces. And I think Batavia's been very lucky that, you know, we've been able to fill a lot of the spaces that we've had retail on Randall Road in particular. I mean, we still have a few vacancies, but I know that, you know, the ones that bought the Kohl Center, they've got some really great plans for what they'd like to fill in there. We just recorded the plat for the Outlots. So, I mean, it's, you know, they're, they're making a really strong effort to try and fill those spaces with things. And, you know, we also have to open our minds up to alternative uses for things, too. I mean, when you look at, you know, retail, it's not quite the same as it used to be. You have to look at entertainment. You have to look at, you know, you know, other types of things that bring people in and do other things. Unfortunately, you find a lot of the convenience stores have just become liquor stores. So they're, you know, convenience for selling liquor plus, you know, the other stuff you'd sell in traditional convenience store. That's what a lot of them become, so not, not necessarily ideal, but, you know, that's, that's, that's the reality of it, so.
I think we should look at, you know, if you guys can do this in-house and do it next year, look at that and try to decide how we want to maybe adjust zoning or what kind of district we want to make that out to be, and then try to figure out how to move that forward and do that next year. Okay?
As part of that, we can, you know, later on, talk about, you know, what are the things we need to do to move that along if it involves financial incentives or things like that, too, so.
That sound good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. I'll move on to item 10, which is a discussion on On Street Bike Path on Millview Drive from Main Street to Route 31.
Thank you so much. Let me open up the presentation. I sound like I have 40 slides, but actually only three.
You got three minutes.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to use the other one. So we are here today, or I'm here today, to talk about Millview Drive from Main Street to Town Avenue. Why that portion? Because we are currently working on that portion resurfacing the street. So if you drive down Millview, you'll see a lot of barricades out there, looks like, you know, a lot of work going on. So that portion of Millview Drive is actually 38 feet long. Rest of the Millview from Town to Route 31 is scheduled to resurface next year. So I'll bring a similar presentation next year when we are ready to resurface that. Just a little background, last year, the city adopted the bike and ped plan, and then in that ped, bike and pedestrian plan, identified that Millview Drive, Millview Drive should be upgraded, if you want to say. It's currently a bike route. Upgraded to sign it better, you should have pavement markings for bike path, separated or shared bike path. Those were the recommendations. So we looked at it and we said, what can we do to it when we resurface the street this year? So it's designated as a bike route, and it was identified, identified as the number five, top priority for shared use or or bike route. So that's the background of it. So I'll take you on a little drive to show you what Millview Drive looks like now. So this is the intersection of Millview and Main Street. So if I'm heading south, you can see there is a double yellow line separating the north and south traffic. And then you can see, as you get, go south a little bit, you can see on the west side of the street, there is parking that's mostly used by high school kids during the school time and after school, mostly for school act, after-school activities, and then people who go to the park, they use that parking area. So on the west side is parking. On the east side, this is just a white line designating no parking. People use that for as a bike, you know, to bike, but that's mostly no parking. So the parking is not allowed on the east side, but on the west side, parking is allowed. So as you drive down, driving south on Millview, the same thing, you know, it's, it has parking and it ends at the driveway, and you keep going, there is parking all the way where you can see it's almost to the Allen Drive. So it's the same thing, parking on, on one side, no parking on the other side. You can see some parking as you keep going. So you're on the Musa Drive, and here is Allen Drive you can see coming in, and just past the Allen, you can see the parking kind of ends right around here. That's the end of the parking. And then it's, it's the white line on both sides. It's just to narrow up the street, to give you a narrow feeling of the street, because the street is from curb to curb, it's like 37 feet wide. So if you just put a double yellow, it will be like almost 18 feet wide for each side. So this is a, if you want to say, street or roadcoming measure to, to give a narrow feeling to the, to the people to drive slower. And this is what is pretty much, as you, as you drive south, this is what pretty much all the way to Town Avenue. And we'll talk about just the Town Avenue, up to Town Avenue today. So there are two segments. One is from Main to Allen is like a segment one, if you think about it, because there is parking, and there is the segment two, which is Allen Two all the way to the town. Then I'll go back to my presentation. Then I'll go back to my presentation, so you have an idea what it looks like. So this is what it looks like. So let's talk about the segment one, Main Street to Ellen. This is what it looks like. Parking on the west side, no parking on the east side, and there is a 12-foot lane, northbound, 12-foot lane, southbound. So now that we are going to grind the street and we're going to pave the street, it will be new surface, we have an opportunity to implement whatever we want to implement with the striping. So as staff, we are going to present couple of options to you. Obviously, there is a lot of options. You can do permutation combinations and come up with many options. But the two options that we as a staff thought that are most viable for, you know, what the ped, bike and pet plan had proposed. So first option, alternative one, is, uh, I'll go back. So there is the no parking area for six feet, so we convert that six feet into a four-feet on-street bike path. So next to the curb, you'll have a four-feet bike path. Next to that, you'll have the northbound lane. So we are going to narrow up the lane even more. It's now 12 feet wide, we're going to narrow up to 11 feet wide. So you're going to feel more squeezed. And then southbound lane will be 11 feet, we'll add a four-feet bike lane, and parking will remain as it is, six feet parking. It's actually seven feet, because the garden line, which is like 12 inches wide, it's counted as part of the parking. So I didn't show that, but it's actually seven feet, including the garden line. So that's option one, or alternative one. There is a second alternative, and you have seen this in many places, like more urban areas, like City of Chicago, where you have the bike lane, you have the northbound lane, southbound lane, then you are going to have the parking, and you are going to have the bike lane west of the parking. So you are kind of separating the, only the southbound bike people from the traffic. The reason behind this is, like, just imagine that you are parking on this, one of the parking spot. You park, you open the door, you're next to a bike lane, you could hit a bikers. So if you separate them and put them on the right side of your car, then the chance of hitting them is less. So this is more of a more urban setting, but we thought that we'll present to you so that you can weigh the options. As staff, um, from Public Works, we like this option, because it, it separates the bike lane from the traffic. We don't just, we don't have the wit to separate this side. Somebody can ask why you are not separating this one. We just don't have that. It's, it's your constraint. So at least on one side, we can do that. And, and that's what the staff recommends, um, but again, you can weigh that. Any questions so far? Yes?
So I'm not really a big fan of narrowing the, I like.
My, my thought, I don't know if staff has thought about this, would be you keep it 12 feet and 12 feet for northbound and southbound lanes. The parking can stay on the southbound lane, and then you make the bike lane six feet, and you make it just like a street. You can put the striping down there for north and south on that. You have one bike lane, I don't know why we need two on that street. And I would say, just going, because I know you're not past Ellen Drive yet, I know that those parking spots are full and they're in high demand because they're free. They should be going all the way down to town. I don't know why we arbitrarily cut it off, um, in terms of the parking for the students there. There's very minimal parking for the students. There's more people driving now than ever before. And even though everybody wants people to carpool, it doesn't happen that much. So I, first of all, I think that the, the top one, alternative one's a horrible idea, because people will open their car door up and, you know, there could be a bike. So alternative two would be okay, but then my other thought is, it, it's not like there are hundreds of bikes that are going up and down this road all the time, all during the day. I think that there's clearly more traffic, so why do we want to narrow the traffic more? When we're already talking about how like narrow lanes on Route 31 are a problem. Why don't we keep the lanes the same size, 12 feet? You put parking all the way down to town on the southbound lane, so there's more parking for the students anyway, that's free. And then you just make the bike lane a nice big six feet. I mean, do you, as a bike, do you need more than three feet to go by? If you, if you actually, on the random happenstance that there's somebody going north and south at the exact same time, that you can't get by three feet, three feet?
So a couple of, uh, things on that. So if you remember that, um, drive that I took you, there is a double yellow line? That takes up one feet. We are going to change that to adjust the dash line. So it's, even though we are showing it as 11 feet, virtually, it's going to be the same as what it is today, because we are gaining that effort from that double yellow line. So we are not really narrowing up that much.
You can give the bike lane seven feet, then, on one side. I don't know why we have to have a bike lane on both sides of the road.
So, so that creates confusion. There were like some studies done that if you put bike lane, like, let's say you put the bike lane right here, both, both bike lanes on one side.
On the northbound lane.
Okay, so if you put it on this side, the people.
Which is the side by the park, which is more common for people to be going down anyway.
Yeah, we, we can do that if that is what council wants to do. But this is now the more common practice, that if you put the bike lane on street, you put it with the flow of traffic, so that people, the cars, headlights and all that can see your red light in the, behind the bike and look at you, you're, they're coming from behind you, rather than coming in front of you. This is, this is what the ASTO or American Association of State Highway Officials, they recommend, the MUD City recommends this, this is what they recommend right now. So that's why we separate it out.
I disagree, but I'm sure I'm going to be voted against, so that's fine.
Yeah, cyclists wouldn't, I understand the merit of the plan of having the bike lanes like that. Cyclists wouldn't know, because that's not how other streets are, so they're going to ride with the flow of traffic. And I'm not talking about like, moms riding the bike to the park with their kids and talking about like, people who are like, really cyclists, they ride with the flow of traffic. So they're going to ride like that, one of these models. The question I had before, how narrow are the lanes on 31? What is the measurement of those?
So they're, they're anywhere between eight to 10 feet, 10 and a half feet is the max.
Significantly more.
It's, it's wider than Route 31 street. Yeah, Route 31, we are talking about eight feet, eight and a half feet.
Teeny tiny, yeah.
Yeah, teeny tiny.
I would say, I drive, I was going to say, I drive up and down Millview about 100 times a day, and those lanes feel plenty.
They feel like.
Yeah, and not like when you're driving on 31 where you're like, so anxious.
That's the whole point of the road diet on 31, it's going to make it so that it's not that, that narrow. I'm just saying why, all right. I know I'm getting voted against, it's fine.
So 10 feet is the minimum, uh, 11 feet is preferable, 12 feet is like, now you're like really giving room to everyone, like, it's wide.
I think it'd be a good idea with all the students that are constantly there, limited amount of bikes that are there as opposed to the drivers, when you're looking at a whole lot of teenage drivers as well. Why make it more narrow? Okay? It's just constantly used by teenage drivers during the school day.
We, we are not going to narrow it up, it's, as I said.
By the way, I'm not anti-bike, I'm just saying, I think that for this portion of the, for this portion of this area, I don't, I don't see any.
Yeah, with, with double yellow being gone, we are actually gaining some, because that double yellow will change to just a single dash, dashed yellow. So it's like you can cross over if you want. Now with double yellow, legally, you cannot cross over into the other side. Yes?
Yeah, um, this whole situation presents a problem that I've been dealing with for probably the last 10 years with my police chief. And the fact that Millview Drive starts out in September with X number of cars. But then as the year goes on, the school year goes on, there's all these folks that have just got their driver's license, and they're now wanting to drive. And that, all the rental spaces that are available out there are gone. And so suddenly, we used to have a bet between myself and the police chief as to how far down Millview Drive the line would be before school got out in June. And he, he would go out every year and count how many cars were in the Batavia High School parking lot, and how many of them weren't in the Batavia High School parking lot. And inevitably, we got more out than in before the year was over with, because we would constantly pick up more new cars from all the new drivers who just got the license and then could drive. So I, I know our, the Covenant Church got involved in this, and they now, I think, are renting spaces. And that's become very popular with a lot of people, and that helped to kind of bring down that expansive number that we had. But at one point in time, we were almost down, well, to Town Avenue at least, uh, by about April or May was the school year started to come to an end, they were way down there. Then we had to take some pretty stern actions over on Pitts Lane, which is the side street there, because suddenly everybody decided they wanted to park on that, then they wanted to park on Ellen. So then we had to go out there and sign all those and say, I don't know, two-hour parking, if you park here, you're going to get a ticket. And then they had a, police had to make a concerted effort to go out specifically on Pitts Lane and start writing tickets. So this thing is a movement in progress, and there's, I'm not sure there's any solid action to it, but anything we do there, I think we better be prepared to know that what's there today, six, nine months from now, is going to be totally different as far as volume of traffic.
Batavia Park District is actually, um, doing 22 spots at Ingsrum Park. So that's something new this year.
Do they, they don't require any?
It's a permit, so.
Permit? You buy it from them, then, okay?
Yeah, I don't know if they're doing a lotto or what they're doing, but.
But it was interesting to me, the number of people whose parents would buy them a permit, and I think once Covenant Church made the decision, they could make some money off of it. They put it out, and I think they sold all their permits in a few days, they were all gone. So that driving to school, I, as I remember, the chief started counting them, and the first year, we had 677 cars out there at the end of the school year. And the next year, he counted, and we began with 573, I think, and before the year was over with, we were almost up to 800. I mean, there, there, it grows because of the new drivers, and I can understand that, that makes the hottest sense, that that's what's happening.
Just curious with alternative two, how do you mark the bike lane as, as separated from the parking lane, so that people don't just automatically pull all the way over to the curb to park?
So, so obviously, there will be signs on the pavement, and then there will be signs, um, next to the bike, uh, route, saying that it's a bike route, do not park. If that doesn't work, um, you have to have like barricades or small, you have seen those, like small barricades that goes all along where there is parking. So that's, that will be the next phase, to separate it out, so that people don't just go and park.
And I know there's a lot of parking that happens because of the school, but in my mind, it's not that different than, um, Main Street, south of Van Nordwick, where the parking and the bike lane are the same right now. So if you're on a bike, you have to still go around the cars, so you're still dealing with being careful not to be hit by a door opening, um, which I know is kind of the normal out here, and that's like the expectation. If you're a biker, you, you brake carefully around cars, but, um, I'm not against alternative two, I'm just more concerned with just trying to retrain people on how that's going to work, since we don't have that anywhere else in town.
I would like to see the bike lanes be more standardized around town, not have one kind on one street, one kind on another street, and a different one somewhere else. I mean, they still have to follow the rules of the road if they're on the actual street. So that still, you know, has to be learned and followed. But I think we, you know, I'd like this to be simple and not have, have to say, okay, we put the, you know, the bike lane on the outside, now people park across the bike line every day, so now we have to do something different out there to keep them from parking over the bike lane. And, you know, I think that, that just leads to more and more issues out there. Plus, I also want to know how we handle that into the future. Do we have to go out and re-stripe everything every year? Re-sign it for half of the year, so that we make sure that people follow what's out there? I think this should be something, one, that we have some input back from the bicycle or active transport, yeah, the, the transportation committee, so that that comes back here. And I think it's something that, you know, yes, we need to make a decision on how we're going to do that, but I'd like to, to be simple. And as far as the parking goes further down, I think that that just is going to grow to what it's going to grow to, and, and we can restrict it in some places, because it does become a safety issue, when you have cars parked all the way to corners and everything else. So I think that's something that both the police and Public Works are going to have to monitor and figure that out.
Sorry, I was going to, I have another slide, which talks about from Ellen to Town, on proposal. But the, I'm the one probably pushed, uh, Public Works a little bit for this alternative two. The thought process was that these are young kids, like Mayor said, they are like the fast-time drivers. So this is the time to, you teach them, and you can teach them easily that this is parking, this is bike lane, so you stay off. So kind of teach them the new way of the rules, rather than, you know, trying to teach an old guy like me to, you know, new tricks, so.
Trying to teach them to stay off their phone when they're going to drive. So that'll be tough.
I'm, I'm a little leery of the, uh, bike lane all the way in the outside of the, of the second option there. Uh, with the parking, uh, the vast majority of those cars are going to have a passenger, and they're going to get out both doors. The, uh, and, and keeping them within that lane, I think the, um, you know, that, that's, that can be problematic. Maybe it's, it could be solved with some, you know, getting a few tickets or something if they're, you know, going into that lane. I'm not necessarily opposed to what you're talking about, Chris, that having the, the desert dedicated, uh, you know, you basically, instead of having it divided into, you know, five lanes, you have it into four lanes, or, or, well, parking in three lanes.
That, that's more like an off-street bike path, like you see when the bike path is completely off-street, that's the norm, that you have.
Yeah.
Side by side. On, on-street bike path, that is not recommended at all.
If you, if you look on that, there is, uh, a path along, along Ingsrum Park, right along Ingsrum Park.
That's not for cyclists.
Yeah.
Off-street.
That's within the park, though.
Yeah.
Abby?
Um, as a cyclist, I'm a big fan of being on the inside of the parking, and it's option two shows that barrier between moving traffic and a bike lane is much more comfortable, it's a much safer, yes, you might get hit by a passenger door, but you're guaranteed to have a driver door. You're only sometimes going to have a passenger door. So that is, that is absolutely where I think we should move and be more consistent throughout town, and where parking and bike lanes are sharing a street, to definitely have that. I'm sorry I missed the beginning of the conversation, so I apologize.
No, you just barely.
Barely, oh, okay. Um, just to the comments about parking and the school and the expansion, um, and the fact that nobody is carpooling anymore, I think if, if, if we would like to see more traffic of young and experienced drivers coalescing around this spot, if that's our goal, then yes, we should expand parking. If we want to, um, restrict that, make biking more comfortable, um, none of these options were available. When we went to school here, you couldn't park on Millview, you couldn't park on Western, you couldn't park at the church, you couldn't park anywhere. And so there were at least four people in our cars every time we went to school. We did carpool because we had to. So the more you expand free parking, yes, the more cars we're going to have, the less carpooling we're going to have. We've made it too easy, and we've made other modes of transportation too hard, so every parent is buying their kid a car to get them to school. So it's all part of an interwoven system, making it the safest and the most comfortable for cyclists, and we can undo those things, unless we're not trying to undo those things, unless that's our goal, is to make, uh, the school parking lot is the scariest place in the entire world to be. That is where I saw and encountered and experienced and were in the most amount of car accidents. So, ugh, yeah, like, let's, let's get, let's get these kids out of their cars, let's give them a safer way to get around town.
I want to say, I'm, I also am a strong proponent of alternative two. Actually, when I saw this was on an agenda item earlier, I went into what's called streetmix.net, which is an online utility that lets you map these out, and I came up with that exact scenario, so it's definitely, I have very much a similar mindset. I, I think having that parking lane as an option to buffer at least one of the bike lanes from traffic does have a positive psychological effect. I do share concerns that people are going to not really understand that and use the bike lane as just deeper parking, basically. Was there any plan to like paint the bike lane green, for instance, to help demarcate that more visually, or is that difficult?
Definitely, we, we can do that, but that's a cost added to the project, and it's an ongoing maintenance all the time. But that's something if council wants to try, uh, I mean, I, I think we'll be more than entertained that.
Park is next.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of two. I would like to see these more protected. You talk about being it like in a city, but in a city, they're protected. There, we should have bollards up and down here, even if they're just like the, the small plastic ones or something. And. And, yeah, I hear the concerns about the door opening up, but really, the, the parking is mostly full during school, and people aren't riding their bike that way during school, and they're going to see the people getting into the car. I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal, yes, it's still plausible, but I would like to see them protected. And Alan, I'd like to see it consistent, but we don't have 35-foot wide streets all over town, thankfully. So when we have the opportunity to do it right, we should do it right, unless we're going to widen everything, which I know Abby will not let us widen all the streets. So I would do it as number two.
Robert?
I would take, speaking to your point about consistency, is really, I think that striping has, and the painting has a lot to do with that, though. I mean, and I know this street is old, so it's really faded, but it's, it's not always clear what's the bike lane and where's the parking part. And I think when you talk about, you know, possibly green striping, which I know is expensive and maybe cost prohibitive, if you know that when you see that, though, that's the bike lane, the configuration differences because of the different streets and everything wouldn't be as much of an impact if you had some other kind of visual cue that this is the bike path.
Kara?
I got very excited about the potential for the green striping on the bike lane. When it doesn't mention it, I think that would be wonderful, and I understand it's a cost, but even if it were a faded green lane, and that is really going to be helpful for training new drivers, too. Like, this is the visual cue that is needed for everybody.
Do, do you want it on both sides of the street, or just that side where the parking is?
Every bike lane in town.
Every bike lane? Only on Millview, right?
No. But let's start with Millview.
Let's start with Millview, okay.
Put both sides.
And I think that whatever we can do to highlight it, to try to make it more obvious, is a good thing. But if we start going through and we started to look at how many miles of green paint we would have to put out there, even if we just striped them, I think we have to figure out what will be consistent, whether we have the lanes on the inside or the outside, that we can make that decision in different places. But to be able to sign it and stripe it with some consistency is going to make it more user-friendly, and more people will adapt to that quicker if we do it that way.
Leah?
Sorry if I missed this, but has this gone to the Active Transportation Committee yet? This is planned?
So it was in the Bike and Ped Plan that was approved by the City Council. So, because it was approved, and these were the recommendations, so we took the recommendation. They really said, they really recommended shared use on one side and dedicated bike lane on the other side, but when we measured, we, we said we could put bike lane, dedicated bike lane on both sides. So why do shared use? Because shared use, for many bikers, is not comfortable. So this is more comfortable.
We need to find, like, five kids at the high school to start a bike group there, so that they will actually use these for school. Tony?
You had said that the first portion is to Town Road there, is the width, the width is 36 feet all the way to Town Road?
Yes.
Is, what about from Town Road, if we, if we decided to do this, would it work from the rest of the way from Town Road to 31?
I believe it is. I did, I measured this, this portion, I measured it with the measuring wheel, that portion I haven't measured it. I left it for next year, so.
Yeah. So I, I just bring that question up, because if we decide to do it and then realize, well, the second half, when we go and do that, it's not going to work, that's, that should be taken into consideration.
I believe the entire Millview drive is 37 feet back to back, so it's...
Can I clarify, Rahat? What we're talking about here, is this just from Main Street to Allen?
Yes.
We haven't talked about from Allen to Town?
Right, right. So that's the next portion. Again, the width is the same, it's 36 feet, 37 feet. So that portion, if I, I think I showed you the, sorry, I keep clicking on the long, wrong thing. So this is what that portion looks like, right? Double yellow, white line, white line. Again, the white line, the purpose of that white line is to give you a narrow feeling of the street. So there is no, I said it's parking, but there is no designated parking spot. It's parking for the residents, or their families, or friends and relatives. So there is parking 6.1, so that white line is right here, at 6.5 feet, the white line is right here. And the lanes are 12 feet wide. So what we are proposing, again, two alternatives, bike lane on one side, then you have the northbound lane, southbound lane, then the bike lane, and just parking on west, west side of the street. Remember, by putting bike lane on the east side of the street, you're pretty much eliminating the parking for the residents who are on the east side. So they will not have parking right in front of their house, their relatives have to go onto the west side of the street, park there, and then cross the street to get to the parking.
And you're ready for the complaints from everybody on that side of the street, right?
Yeah. Gary knows, I, I wrote an email about that, so.
That's my word.
It's instant, instant complaints.
Okay. So, and, and it's not that we haven't done anything like that in, in last few years. Prairie Street is a perfect example. There was a lot of opposition about taking out parking, but the council decided to put bike lane on both sides of Prairie Street, and we told the residents that they have to park on the side street, not they, their relatives, during Christmas. You park, you park on the side street, and you walk to the, walk to the house. So is it ideal?
Or against that?
Okay. So this is, this is to, again, this is from the Bike and Ped Plan, they suggest, or that's what council adopted, that there should be a bike lane on both sides, from all the way from Main Street to 31. That's the, that's what, the recommendation. So here is two options. In this case, the staff recommends Alternative One, which is kind of what Alderman Sofa was saying, no, kinda, bike lane, then through lane, through lanes, and then bike lane, and then parking. But you are limiting parking only to the west side for all the residents that are out there. Yes.
For what it's worth comparing to the Prairie Street project, there will still be parking on the street, it's just relegated to one side. And from, at least looking at cursory glances here, there's not a huge demand, since these are all single-family homes that have dedicated parking spaces as it is. So I just don't, if there's still parking, like, right across the street, that's very different than having to go to a cross street, like in Prairie. So I, I just don't see it being a huge issue, aside from initial points.
And that change was made on Main Street as well.
Yeah.
From Van Norwick to 31.
Again, it will have a single dash line. What we talked about is, let's say, Amazon truck is going down southbound, he will have the parking area to park and deliver to the west side. But if he's coming up northbound, he will probably take a bike lane, they are allowed, like, 15 minutes to park and deliver your package. So at that time, if you are coming on your bike and hitting that truck, you're going to go around the truck, come on the, you know, through lane and go back into the bike lane. That's what is going to happen, that's the reality, that's going to happen. But it's just that people, or your relative, will not be able to park right in front of your house if you're on the east side.
Abby?
And at a quick count on the map, we're talking 14 homes that front from the west side of the street to Millview, in that stretch.
This would be proposed eventually to go all the way to Route 31, so there's far more than 14 homes.
And I, I don't think that, you know, I mean, I'm sure there'll be some pushback about it, but the reality is, the county is now proposing to do a head-crossing bridge across the Fox, out of the park that's at the end of Millview. That's going to drive traffic, that's going to pull traffic out of the area, from bikes coming into town and from our city going to those trails, because there will be another easy way to get to the east side of the river, for a bicyclist or somebody that's running or pedestrian. So we have to think about that and where that's going to be when that gets done. You know, that's, again, another reason why we need a light at Millview and 31. You know, even with just the three lanes there, with the protected turn lane, I still think we have to fight for that light there. And this is part of it, that, you know, we've talked about this bike and pedestrian plan for a long time, and to get that done and to have it make sense, they have to be connected to things, and they have to have some consistency. So, you know, as long as we mark them out correctly and people are aware of where they're supposed to be in a car and in a bike and a pedestrian, we should be okay. But we can't learn everything for them.
Leah?
Alan, you just made this comment, that Alternative One is similar to what Main Street is right now, between Van Norwick and Route 31, except this has actually designated bike lanes, whereas...
Right, those are sharos.
Yeah, and those are just sharos, so this is a much better situation than what we have on Main Street. But I definitely think whatever we do from Main to Route 31 needs to be consistent. I think it's going to be ridiculous to do something right by the high school, that when you get to Allen, it changes, when you get to Town, it changes again, like, that's just going to be confusing for anybody coming through. So the decision we're making for closer to the high school, in between Town, I think we need to be thinking all the way through the future.
And then it may seem like many moons ago, you guys talked about the Main Street, that reconstruction project from Van Norwick to Randall, that has exactly this configuration, so dedicated bike lane. So it will be a exact same transition into Millview, if you are riding down Main Street, or if you are coming out of high school, so you'll see the same thing.
So we need to be thinking now what's going to be happening on Main to Randall, and then coming all the way down to Millview, yeah?
It's the same configuration, except that parking situation, if you decide to go that parking and then bike lane, so.
So Rahat, clarify that again, so Main Street is proposed to be the upper one there, the first alternate one?
Yes, except there is no parking.
No parking, okay, yeah. Okay.
What was the reasoning for Alternative One being preferred south of Allen by staff?
Because north of Allen is like designated parking stalls, like, you know, there is marking saying, this is your spot, right? But south of Allen, it's just open parking, we'll just have a white line, it's not going to have, like, you can only park here, only park. Does that make sense? There is no stall.
It, it's, it's more specifically demarcated, but I do, I think I agree with Leah, that consistency is key there of, if I have to make that transition zone to Allen, it's just going to be a little, little odd.
I mean, it's just a lot of, lot of pavement marking to maintain, if you, like, do stalls in front of anybody's house.
Oh, yeah, I'm not asking for stalls. I guess, I, I don't, I'm not sure why, a lack of, why the stalls make that big of a difference there. If people are still just going to be parking in that space anyway, it's just maybe not as demarcated. I, I'm just not sure how that affects cyclists.
I, I don't think I'm following you. So you are saying why we are not preferring the Option Two here?
Yes.
So in front of the residential homes, people are more used to parking next to the car line.
Okay.
Right? So they're like, if somebody's visiting me, they just park next to the car. They are not like, unless you put a bike lane and you paint it green, telling people, then you like put bollards, plastic bollards to like separate them, people will ultimately tend to like just go park next to the car.
I see what you're saying.
So, so you have to designate it visually, and then you have to separate it, but then how do you separate through people's driveway, right? It's...
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
How do you protect them? So there is some confusion there. Is it done? Absolutely, it is done many places, but in urban areas, probably it's more done than suburban areas.
One final question. The, with the bike lanes going on Main Street there, is there a plan for that interface at that intersection?
Yeah, so we are stopping short on Millview a little bit, because the Main Street, when that happens, that will all come together at the same, at that time.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
One last comment. So back by, near the high school, with the parking on the outside, I mean, we really have to consider, though, there's only people coming in and out of these parking spots twice a day, and it's a lot of people all moving at the exact same time. So if I'm a cyclist, going down Millview when school gets out, you don't go, but like, you're already, you're dealing with hordes of teenagers walking and driving and every, you know, so you're not worried about one car door coming out at that time, because you're paying attention to a lot of activity. So it's that, that particular area in town, we're not seeing constant parking and pulling out, and, you know, it's, it's morning and afternoon that we see any traffic happening there.
But high school also has after-high school activities, and then the park draws some people also.
Some, but most, if I'm correct in thinking, most after-school activities, there's more available parking in the lots, they're not as much on Millview.
I guess I'd just like to see us keep this as simple as possible, and have it be something that, it's not an urban downtown Chicago street, it's a neighborhood in a suburb, and we're trying to, you know, encourage bikes, we're trying to encourage pedestrians, and we're trying to teach people how to use the different things that we've offered or decided to offer. And I just want to see it be consistent and simple to maintain, and simple for a 16-year-old kid to figure out where they're supposed to park, where they're supposed to ride their bike.
Or a 70-year-old.
Right. Or me. Jen?
I, I think Leah brings up a good point with the students coming in and out at one point. With option number two, when you're at the high school and you see those students come out of school or going to school, they're walking down the bike lanes anyways. And so one of the benefits of option number two is, the kids are going to be walking in the bike lanes, and that'll allow the cars to get out of their parking spots without students walking down the middle of the street to be able to easily navigate their way along the way. That is one benefit I see. I think that if it is decided to do Alternative Two by the high school, that that should be all the way down to Mill Street. You know, we're asking our students, you know, to change their thought on parking, I think it's something that we could easily do for adults to keep that consistency.
Just so you know, Jen, they don't have to walk on the street to go south, there's a sidewalk all the way down that street.
But they don't take it, they walk in the street.
Again, like I said, you can't teach 16-year-olds.
Are we coalescing toward, it sounds like the message is that most would like to see consistency between the two areas, are you coalescing on one or the other alternative as a preference, aside from Alderman Sofa?
I'd say one.
Well, just, yeah. Before we vote, just a question, how do you envision the crossover from one to the other? The transition piece?
Because the, the parking ends at Allen, right? So...
That intersection...
It will just crossover, yes.
Crossover.
I would, I would probably say we can paint it green, that's probably a good idea, but the bollards can be a real tough thing for winter operations, when you're snowplowing.
And with regards to the green paint, I don't know my MBTCD entirely off the top of my head, but my recollection is that one acceptable way is basically picture a rectangle within the white bike symbol in the rectangle, you do, you could do rectangles as you go down the road. It doesn't need to be the, the yellow brick road, the entire thing being green, it can just be the green rectangles, so that drivers recognize that's the bike lane.
Yeah.
And that'll save cost and long-term maintenance as well.
There's only another 15 houses, if you go all the way to 13, or 31 from Town, just that face Millview on that side of the road, just so that we know how many houses would be affected by losing their parking on the west side of the street. And then in cities, in, in Chicago, do they remove their bollards during the winter, or how do they handle snow with bollards?
I don't know.
I, I've said it many times to City Council, we shouldn't always use Chicago as the bellwether. I mean, Chicago, Chicago has a lot of issues, you are walking in downtown, it would be a labor issue to set bollards every year and take bollards up every year and then reset bollards every year. That, you're, you're, that's a long-term maintenance issue, and lots of, lots of man-hours to do that. I think striping is the way to differentiate.
Yeah, and if you get snow out of town, like in September, and the bollards are in, then nobody's cleaning the, or there is no way we can clean that bike lane, that means it's unusable at that time, so.
Some places have little zamp ponies, basically.
For, for alternative, or... From my time living in the city with those bollards, snowplows just tend to kind of mow over them or push snow up against them, and there was often many, many broken ones, and it was not the prettiest sight.
I guess what we need to do now is decide, do we want a Number One or Number Two going down Millview? Because I don't want us to do...
Because I don't want us to do one thing now and then next year when it comes back to do the other section of the road. Decide we want to do something different. So I think we should decide on that now. So we'll just start real simple. Who would like to have one?
Nice one. Quick clarification. Is this just to town or Allen?
This would be, this would be the concept we're eventually gonna be saying all the way, 'cause we wanna keep it consistent.
Yeah, for consistency. I mean, I don't know that we should switch back and forth. Again, we're trying to do this to make it simpler for people to use, so.
But at the end of the day, next year when they go to research this, it will have an opportunity to discuss it-
Right.
-and change it anyways. So if something's not working right, that might be an opportunity to go a different route. No pun intended.
Go around and have people say one or two, and I can just collect the marks.
I wanna do that. We'll just start here with Robin. We'll go around. You get to go first. One or two.
We're trying to wrap this up, or we're gonna be here all night talking about this.
Two.
Two.
I like my idea best, but I'll go with one, if I have to choose one of these two.
So just to clarify, we're, we're saying one or two for the distance, for, for ultimately from, from Maine to 31?
To town.
Maine to town is what we're deciding tonight. Yeah, but, but don't we, when we go, when we do town to 31, don't we want the same as what we have?
Alderman Lane is correct. If you're gonna be voting on this, like Alderman Wolf has already said, think about what's gonna happen to 31, 'cause we're gonna wanna keep it consistent, unless you're gonna wanna start zigging and zagging.
Okay, I would encourage everyone to also take a bike ride down this road, though. During school hours, being connected to the curb and being product, protected during those times is going to be a lot more comfortable. Biking down Millview during other normal times when it's normal traffic patterns, not having a protected lane isn't that uncomfortable. Traffic goes too fast. I think we have, we need other traffic calming to go in on that. That would be my preference before we do parking on the outside of a bike lane. I think we just need to slow traffic down. The zigzagging that you're envisioning on a bike is not as extreme. If it was, if it was two towards the high school and one towards 31, it will change once we get that bridge across there, and I could see a lot more traffic. I think traffic calming is more important. So I'm voting for two without the assumption that we do it all the way to 31. And would be fine with that.
I'll, I'll go for number one. Jen?
Two.
Leah?
Two.
Tony?
Mark?
Nick?
I'm on two without the assumption that it's going to 31.
Sarah?
Two.
Okay.
Or two.
Okay, so we'll go with two. Can stripe it, and then do we wanna do green on the, whatever markings are in the bike lane? So that way, we do it.
So we'll do, I'll explore to make sure what I said was M U T C D compliant, but I believe there is an option for the green rectangles, so.
Hopefully they'll let us do what we just decided.
Yeah, no, there is an op, there's an option to do it. I'm just trying to prevent having the entire thing-
Right, I don't think we need to spend that-
Right.
-much money to do that. Okay.
Again, now that we decided which option, um, one of the questions is that, this is a little different. Like, you, you all collectively decided or voted two. That will be a little different for the residents who are south of Allen, right? Because those are residential homes. So do you want me to invite them, tell them, they, this is what we are doing? If they have any question, they should come and talk to you, because this is, to me, a big change for, for them.
Yeah, when we've done this, we even just had a meeting here about the, the Main Street design that was just here recently. So I think we need to inform them. We did it when we did Main Street from Van Norwick to 31. We did it when we did Prairie Street. We need to do it again, so that way they know it's coming.
Okay.
Give them Allen's phone number.
Yep.
Okay, so we-
That will be explained to them that there's gonna be a bike path on the curb and-
Right.
Yeah, they'll get this drawing.
They'll, they'll look at the drawing that we're looking at, you know, and make sure that they are aware of that.
They'll get the drawing, and then we can invite, we say if, if they have questions, comments, "I'd like to speak to council," they can come to the Cal meeting on this date, whatever that date is. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Do that. Thank you so much for your input.
Okay. And then we'll move on to item 11, which is a discussion on BATV funding. Start us out, or you wanna?
Nope, I do. I think Andrew's gonna-
Yeah, and I would just start it off that I'm glad we finally got this on the, um, the agenda. It is a concern. Um, I don't expect, I think I said this before, I don't expect to, uh, I, I think I said this at the BATV meeting last month. I don't expect the city to fund what Naperville's public television is asking for, which is like one and a half million or something like that, so, um, but anyway, I'll tell-
Well, all right, well, let me rewrite this then. Sorry about that.
You may have to change that. So I'll let Andrew speak, um, and tell us what's going on.
All right. Uh, before I get started, if anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me and ask. I'd be happy to answer them for you. Uh, so, uh, my name is Andrew Van Meter. I'm the Director of Operations at Batavia Access Television, and I'm here to give a brief, brief presentation about the benefits of improving the budget for BATV. Uh, community and city engagement with BATV is the biggest it has ever been before. Well, we're grateful and humbled, uh, by the many compliments from Batavia citizens, the growing interest of community organizations, uh, and the desire by the city to utilize us more for coverage of more events. And while this is all incredible, we are growing beyond what is possible with our current budget. This is a good problem to have, uh, because it means we are not only in a strong position, we're ready to blossom, blossom into something truly unique and special for the city and its residents. Uh, so for those who may not know, uh, what BATV is, is we are Batavia's nonprofit public access television station. Uh, we essentially have three channels, uh, two cable and one YouTube. Uh, our two cable channels, channels are Channel 10, and that is our government channel. So anything government meetings, government-related, that goes on that channel. And then Channel 17 is our public channel, so that is anything that's non-government, public events, whatever, goes up on that channel. Uh, and then our third channel is our YouTube channel, uh, which is all of our covered events, uh, and, uh, shorter coverages that don't normally make it, you know, to air, things like ribbon cuttings. We are staffed by, uh, three people, one full-time, being myself, and then two part-timers. Uh, we are managed by nine board members from different community organizations, representatives. Uh, benefits for the improvement, I broke it down to basically five key points. Uh, staff retention and growth, equipment updates and maintenance, uh, improved coverage of city government meetings, events, community events, uh, and the return of and more original programming. Uh, tangentially connected to that would be, uh, someday down the line, uh, the potential, uh, return of a studio. Uh, and then finally, uh, improvement with, uh, community education. Uh, so to start, uh, staff retention and growth. Um, this would be complete full-time staff, uh, competitive salary, livable wage, and to an extent, uh, improved contract pay for, uh, our potential freelancers. Uh, the goal would be to maintain, uh, quality and talented staff instead of losing them to other stations or having their time split between us and their other jobs. Uh, this would allow for better workload distribution, better administrative management. Uh, this immediately improves our coverage of city projects, uh, and events and community events, and, uh, better contract play, uh, pay allows for, um, returning talent and building up of a talent pool, um, which would allow us to essentially bring in, um, local talent from within the community, nearby colleges, um, and would create a talent pool that we can pull from for coverage of larger events and would diversify our coverage as well. Equipment updates and maintenance. Uh, so this would also, um, allow us to have more timely equipment updates and maintenance. Um, the equipment wear and tear happens, laws change, uh, and we have to adapt and adjust to those things. Uh, it's just the reality of running a television station. Uh, lifespan of most equipment is between three to five years. Uh, maintenance can extend the life on some of these things. Um, but replacement equipment would include, but are not limited to, broadcast equipment, streaming computers, cameras, batteries, wireless S D I adapters, microphones, tripods, editing computers, and anything and everything else that I've completely forgotten. Uh, updates also fall under a similar category, uh, that would be new computers, camera, cameras, broadcast equipment, essentially anything that would be needed to maintain a new standard of quality. Um, and then I mentioned also laws tend to change. Uh, so you might have things like, uh, if, you know, the government decides that they want to adjust what frequency is available to us, uh, we might have to, you know, replace equipments like lav mics, things like that. Not that there's anything wrong with the equipment, it just means that now we have to adjust for the frequency of what we have access to. That doesn't happen all that often, but it does happen. Uh, improved coverage for city government and community events. With more staff time available, uh, and the improved equipment, our ability to cover increases. And namely, we would have more time and availability to work closely with the communication department, uh, to create unique videos for the city. Um, so things like informational videos, project status videos, things along those lines. Uh, basically, this would allow for an improved communication and transparency between the city and the community. Return of original programming, and, uh, slightly connected to that, the return of a studio. Um, with these improvements that I've mentioned, it would allow us, uh, new programming opportunities to be possible. Uh, original programmings for local businesses, community organizations, and assist, uh, assisting community man, uh, members uh, who wish to make their own show or project. Um, we've made original programming before in the past, um, and those things take time. Uh, but we love doing it, and we love providing that for the community, so this would allow us to bring that back and do that again. Uh, and then, uh, someday future down the road, uh, if we were able to get back into a studio, similar thing, we would now have the return of our studio shows. So things like Batavia Spotlight, Viewpoint, It's News To Me, those shows would be able to return, um, along with new original studio programming. So if anybody, community or community organizations reach out to us and they want to put together a show, we would have access to a studio at that point, which means that the quality and everything can be done much more smoothly and, and would have a much better, uh, product. Um, essentially, this would, uh, increase our options for community coverage as a whole. Uh, last and certainly not least is community education. Um, a major part of BATV is that we are always available for any resident or student who would like to learn more about TV, editing, um, camera work, lighting, audio, whatever. We're here to teach the community. Uh, however, at this time, our time to do that is limited. Um, but with the improvement, uh, we would have much more time and availability for better training and educational options for students and the residents of Batavia. So in short, BATV has formed a strong foundation and is ready to grow. Without an increased budget, this growth we've made will eventually begin to degrade over time. Our goal has always been about providing educational, entertaining, and exciting ways for the community to engage with itself, and for the residents of Batavia to always be a part of the community, no matter where they are. An improved budget and, in the long term, return to a studio would allow this goal to flourish, providing the city of Batavia and its community members the coverage they deserve. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. If you don't have any, um, you can email me at andrew@mybatv.com. You can call our office, 630-454-4584. And I'm happy to answer any questions, anything you might wish to know.
You have questions? I will say over my time on the city council here, one of the things that I am most proud of being involved with is with BATV. Um, one of the reasons we have multiple cameras in here, um, was the board, myself included, I don't know, probably 15, maybe close to 20 years ago, decided that we needed to upgrade just the simple little camera tripod we had in front of everybody most of the time down here. So that way, we had a better feeling that people weren't as worried about having somebody pointing a camera at them in their face and moving around in front of them and dragging cables. So that way, you felt comfortable to be on TV. And to be part of what was going on here at that time was, I think, really interesting that we had a lot of pushback about people being on TV and being recorded and being filmed. So that way, if you couldn't get to a meeting, you could always find it. You could get, request a copy of it. At that time, it was a E H S tape. Or eventually CDs. And, you know, now, the fact that every one of our meetings, committee meetings included, is broadcast, I think makes us head and shoulders above the rest of our neighbors on how we are transparent. And to me, that's one of the, the best parts about it. And to have the other, you know, entities in town that we cover like that and that get broadcast or are available to anyone, anywhere, um, is really important. And then I think this is one of those moments, again, in the life of BATV where it deserves the support of the city, and it needs to remain an integral part because it's also available to anyone to use as a resource. So you don't have to, you know, be an employee or anything else. You can be just a citizen of the viewing area, which now is, if you really wanna say it, it can be anywhere. Um, you can make that case for it. So, you know, it, it is something that is available to anybody. Um, I, I think it's really good that, you know, we have these discussions. I think it's really important right now with our communications department and everything that we're involved in, in town, to be able to have something like this that gets better every year, that expands its reach, you know, expands its coverage and, and allows, you know, the community to stay connected in a different way than maybe it would be if we still had daily newspapers or, you know, you know, you don't have to go to Facebook to figure out what's happening on Randall Road. You could actually look it up yourself on the city website and find a meeting that tells you what it was about. So to make that easier and to move that forward, I think we have to look at how we funded BATV in the past, which was just by the franchise fees that came in. Well, as cable has shrunk and those franchise fees have shrunk, so has the budget for BATV. And yet, over the last 20 years, they've expanded, time and time again, to be able to cover more. So I think it's important now that we change that mechanism and make it more of a line item in the budget that, again, deserves review every year and, you know, justification for what it's asking for, if it's something above and beyond what we think is okay for it from a council level. And then we have that discussion every year at budget time and move forward. Mark?
Andrew, I don't have the numbers in front of me, um, and maybe between you and Laura, like, not sure exactly what you're getting right now, and if you have like a target that, like a low, medium, and high target that you'd be looking for.
Um, I believe, Dave, I think you had some of the numbers with you, yeah?
If you can identify yourself for the record.
Dave, one more. I am the President of the Board of BATV and a longtime volunteer. You probably know that I've worked with Allen on football for many years. Um, just looking at the funding, I'd go back as far as 2018, when BATV received about 236,000 per year. That's decreased to last year to 183,000. So there's been a significant decrease based on the reduction of franchise fees. So operating with a very lean budget, um, they've done a commendable job, but it's becoming more and more difficult, as Andrew said.
I'd also point out that, um, part of our strategic action plan is to, um, work on, um, improving the collaboration between the city and BATV to produce more, um, valuable content for our residents.
And, and the, I know we get some sponsorships, um, for things, and there's some marketing, um, but it's obviously not, it's not bridging that gap, so to speak.
No, with the sponsorships, and we're, we're always grateful for our sponsors, um, especially during the football season. But, uh, that normally goes with paying for, um, if, if we do have some freelance, uh, contract work, it'll go to pay for them, um, and otherwise, it is used to pay for the fees, like, when they go to playoffs. We have to pay the I H S A fees to cover that.
Dave, do you guys have a number that you would like us to? 'Cause we're, obviously, this needs to go in a budget to go beyond where we're at, and those franchise fees keep on dropping, so.
Um, I think the, the number we would, we would shoot for is around 300. I think this would be make it doable.
Okay.
Would you have an annual budget to be able to share with us, to show us exactly what those expenditures would be put toward?
Absolutely, yeah.
Great.
Do you guys have any questions or comments about it? I mean, it's something that I think we should be, feel very lucky that we have available to us, and that has consistently, you know, been available. Um, I, I look back to some of the programming when we moved stuff around from studio to studio, or from one place to another, and the amount of videos that were originally there that were done, when, what was it? It was maybe, I can't remember what the original name was for, uh, Batavia Access Television. This was going back into probably the 80s. And, you know, there was, uh, talks with Batavians or some, some of the things that were done, and it was hundreds of hours of programming that was done, basically by three or four volunteers over probably the first 15 years or so of BATV. And that's all been archived, and that all can be played again. But it's gotta have somebody that can get in and spend the time to put all that together, and I think- And I think that's something we move forward at some point and get into a studio again, we can start another round of that. So, you know, I think there's people that will have opportunities to do that into the future that it, it'll be something that's also really good historically to be able to have some of that.
Yeah, and Alan, you talked about volunteers and so multiple board members volunteer to help with marketing and finance and Steve, if he's still here, Steve helps with the technology. So it's really, I mean, it's, it's amazing what gets done with the volunteers and Andrew, uh, you and your couple of part-timers, I mean, you look and you see the stuff that's out there and that's, it's a lot of work being done and it's impressive and I think, uh, the community deserves, um, a little bit more, uh, funding towards this.
Technology that's in the little tiny black boxes that we rely on to make things happen is unbelievable compared to what it used to be in giant racks of things that we tried to put together to be able to do remote broadcasting. And now today, you can literally do it with a device like that and Wi-Fi card. Nick?
Um, what might make it easier to sell? Do you have the data as far as how many people you're reaching? How many of our, uh, neighbors and whatnot are watching?
Comcast, uh, won't, uh, give us the numbers television-wise, um, but I can tell you streaming large events, um, especially football, we can get, you know, thousands. You know, I think, uh, Alan, I think we've, like, one of the biggest games, we've gotten up to.
Five thousand, five hundred. Individual views. We had at one point, one of the playoffs games against Geneva. I can't remember what year that was, but that was one that was huge and it was like 3,000 for almost the entire second half.
And not just that, you know, if there's a big, you know, ticket item that the, you know, city is discussing, we'll have, you know, we can get a couple hundred people who'll tune in for things like that.
And you can pull up, I have this up here just during, to make sure the broadcast is okay. That's just me. But you can, you can pull that up and you can see how many people are watching. And you'd be surprised when we have a crowd out here.
At least four people.
There's a lot more than four. There's a couple of times where there's a hundred, which I don't know if that's just individual views or how they share that on YouTube, but it is amazing when you see that. Or how many times somebody's pulled it up and watched it after the meeting happens. And that's where I think it's important so that people stay informed, because that's what we want. Yes.
So, you know, one of the things that, um, we'd like to do with, um, our communications department and with BATV is sit down and do some future planning to talk about what ways that we could build this, uh, in future years. You know, we talk about the studio. There are neighboring communities who have implemented a studio environment within their, uh, city halls that we'd like to, you know, maybe take a look at and see, uh, what are the possibilities that we could incorporate here. So look forward to working with BATV on future plans.
That'd be fantastic.
So we'll try and get numbers back and have things ready so that when we get to budget time this year, we'll have the, the real discussion on this. But we wanted everybody to be aware of this upfront because over the last five or six years, funding has really shrunk to the point where we rely more on, um, you know, volunteers to get a lot of the stuff done. And we need to make sure that when those volunteers aren't here, that there's a way for this to keep going. So that's something we have to plan for. Thank you.
You guys, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we will move on now to item 12, project status.
Okay, um, we received good news last week. We had a meeting with King County and the Park District. Um, King County is utilizing some of their ARPA funds for a large project that is called the Fabulous Fox River, um, Water Trail and getting it designated federally as a, a water trail. Um, and one of the things that they have done is they're looking at creating, um, more entryways to the river for kayaks and canoes. And I don't know if you're aware, but there is a boat launch kayak canoe launch, um, that had to be blocked, which is, uh, just adjacent to the skate park on, um, South River Street. And, um, we had a meeting with King County and in addition to other staff, the fire chief was there. And he mentioned that it would be very advantageous to have this launch there for an additional area to do water rescue. And that was very influential in the county deciding that they wanted to, um, put this launch back in. So, um, right now they're going to be working on engineering a solution there, um, and also to make it ADA accessible to that, um, canoe and kayak launch. So, but, and, uh, we think that this is going to happen exactly in conjunction with the Park District's, um, OSLAD grant work that they are doing there, the many improvements and enhancements that they're going to be doing to that area, um, this year and, uh, into next year. We received the, uh, permit application for Earth Movers Credit Union. And as you'll recall, that was the last empty parcel that was part of the former Avenue Chevrolet property. So it has been very exciting to see all of the development that has occurred there, enhancements to, you know, what we have there along our Randall Road corridor, both with, you know, restaurants and the Starbucks and the Bell Tire and now the credit union completing that area, um, that I think we can look to as a very successful project. HR is continuing and, and also IT implementation of the Paycom, um, Human Resources System. Mike Kamen, who, uh, is our GIS supervisor, attended the National ESRI Conference last week in California and he has come back full of, uh, great ideas and, uh, with the latest improvements to that system. Uh, the Fire Department hosted a leadership conference and we had Fire Department members from across the country who attended that training here. Uh, some staff members and I, for dinner tonight, went to the Tipacop event that was held at Riverside Pizza. And it was wall-to-wall people with a line out the door. So I think that's going to be a phenomenally successful event. Like to thank our members of the Fire Department, including Chief Maza, who, uh, were there in attendance. And then also, uh, on August 6th, the Police Department is planning a national night out. Um, so save the date and get the word out. It's August 6th from 4:30 to 8:30 PM. It'll be in the field near the Pegbon Center. The event is going to include bicycle safety and registration information, child safety seat education, drone education and demonstrations, King County SWAT vehicles, Batavia Fire Department personnel with ladder truck and ambulance, a kids' game tents, and food and beverages at the event will be, uh, free. Thank you to, uh, Fernando's Street Kitchen and also Target and Batavia Creamery, Batavia Main Street, Boji Bikes, Big Bear Sunglasses, Starbucks, and Greenlight Driving School for providing the food and, uh, free activities that will be available at this event. So we hope that lots of Batavia families will avail themselves the opportunity to come down to that event. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions for tonight? Okay. Are there any others? Anybody got anything tonight? Okay, then we will move to, uh, an executive session, uh, for contracts relating to the purchase, sale, and delivery of electricity. Need a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Soffa, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, we will now go into executive session.